Hey Katie.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good. Enough meetings this week for you?
Yeah. Yeah, there was a week. No. We, I feel like there was a week recently that I ended up having three meetings in one week. What week was that?
Too much.
Because we had the joint committee. Yeah, we had negotiations and then I had the joint committee and then we had school committee meeting. So two meetings is better than three.
That's too much for me. But that's okay.
Yeah, hopefully.
My other thing is canceled because it's, you know, a snowstorm, which is nice.
Right. And how are all your people?
Oh, not so good. Another one came up positive today. One of my favorites, but they're doing okay.
Yeah.
By the time their tests are coming back, their symptoms are pretty much ending.
Right.
So they're okay. Hey, heads up though, I talked to Jackie. I am pretty sure one of my students is looking to sue Amherst. And as soon as he files that lawsuit, I need to leave school committee.
Oh, man.
I've done it May anyway, but.
My term is up in May.
Yours is too?
Yeah. I mean, do you know that I'm homeschooling my kids right now? They're not enrolled. So, and I talked to Jackie and I talked to Lauren when she was the chair and I was making my decision and talked with Jen. And just wanted to be sure it was like, you know, that I was very willing to step down if that's what they wanted me to do, but they didn't want me to do that.
So you're still representing like a good chunk of parents.
Right.
That are also doing that. It's not that you, you know, you're not intending to keep them forever at home, right? That's just.
That was definitely not our intention. My oldest is doing significantly better at home. Like he, his learning is really different now than what it was at school. But that's not my, it was not our intention to do it permanently. So.
And you're working too, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know how you do it.
Yeah, it's easier than having my kids remote in because that would not go well with them. It didn't go well in the spring and it wouldn't go well now. Just who they are. So I'm trying to figure out if if there are other people that want to jump into school committee and feel like they're ready to go, that's probably what you know.
Well, Jackie has a heads up and she's looking for interested people, but I, it looks like that's going to move forward faster than. I thought he was bluffing, so I didn't really worry about it, but I don't think he is. So I think as soon as that it just becomes a conflict of interest for me to stay on school committee and that.
Yeah.
I thought I could write it out to May, but I don't think I can. So, sorry. I know you just picked up the end of that, Jen. I don't know if I gave you a heads up on that one or not.
No, now I'm sad.
There's a legal situation brewing between my work and Amherst schools. So I'm I wish I wasn't being dragged into it, but can't always. File that, I think I need to be done before May. But I did give Jackie a heads up because I wanted her to put some thought into whose ears she might want to be encouraging. There are certainly a whole lot of people with a lot of views about the schools right now.
Oh, yes, there are.
Maybe one of them could put their energy into something like that.
Maybe some positive energy might come.
I want to be the right one of them, but you know, everybody's got opinions.
Oh, I had a secretary had a little saying about that, not Pam, but it makes me chuckle when I hear everybody's got opinions. She also, yeah, she also named, you know, yeah. She makes, I laugh whenever I think about her. She also rode on her motorcycle to school every day, so.
Gosh, that's great.
The kids would say like, you're so cool. And then look at me like, and you're not. Yes, I know that.
I gave up on that a long time ago.
So I think Jackie said she was going to try and come, but I don't know if we want to just start without her and then I'll call the meeting to order at 6:31. And then I need a motion to approve the minutes from November 19th.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Uh, I can second. I wasn't there, but I can second.
It was a two-minute meeting. Uh, so.
Any comments, edits?
Am I just, have I never recognized this before, the AIF at the end?
All in favor?
Of course. Thank you. Just not picking up on that. Perfect.
Probably my bad note taking, but yes.
No, no.
So I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. So we moved the policies from last meeting to this meeting because the meeting was called to order late. I think we had some technical glitches perhaps. The first policy on the agenda is policy BEDH, which is public comment at school committee meetings. And the first policy is our current policy back in 17. And then the second is the current policy from MASC, but I do believe ours is very similar to the current policy. So the only difference is in the MASC policy, it says at the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals sign up for an opportunity to speak during public comment. The public comment segment shall not exceed 15 minutes. And we have
The chair shall determine.
The chair shall determine the length, yes. And then there's the other sentence that says all speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. And the other piece that's different prior to number one is I think due to some sort of freedom of speech slash also other issues around public comment. And the new policy from MASC reads, public comment is not a discussion, a debate or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. And so that piece was added because it's not a public meeting. It's a school committee meeting that encourages, that occurs in public. So there's that little nuance that in order for the school committee to efficiently conduct their business, we have to make sure that public comment doesn't overtake the entire school committee meeting, even though we want the public there to be able to hear their feedback and comment. So I do think my recommendation is that paragraph in the new MASC version is important, that it's not a discussion, a debate or a dialogue, because I think especially if there are contentious issues, we could get stuck in the debate part and not be able to conduct our regularly scheduled business.
I do also think there's a there's a difference with number three. About ours says are limited to those on our agenda. And there says within the scope of the school committee.
Yes.
And I I mean, I don't know that there's in practice ever a time that we wouldn't allow comment on something that was on our agenda if some, if someone from the public came to say something, but I, I do wonder if it should be more spelled out that it should be within our scope.
I think within our scope thing is how it should be because if somebody comes to public comment to a meeting and it's something needs to be discussed, you put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Right.
Yes. In all fairness, that's because.
It's in the scope.
Right. In all fairness, I think that's some of the other reason behind the newer policy is that if someone brings something up at a school committee meeting and it may engender discussion, I think it behooves the school committee to shift it to the next agenda so that if people wanted to hear about it, that they could be present.
Right. So that they could. A person may come and ask us if they thought that that's the way it was done to to make a comment about an issue we needed to address and the chair could move it to the next month. But I think, yeah, I think having it be there that it's in our scope rather than the agenda.
Yes. And then I, number four is also knew the chair of the meeting after a warning reserves a right to terminate speech, which is not constitutionally protected because it constitutes true threats that are likely to provoke a violent reaction and cause a breach of the peace or incitement to imminent lawless conduct or contains obscenities. I mean, not that that typically happens in Shrewsbury, but I do think, you know, there could be a time where it could devolve into something. And I think that's important, that the public knows that the chair does have the right to terminate the comment.
And this is the policy that we that is on the back of every agenda when they're print, you know, when they're printed in person.
Yes. Unless you're Fred Vanderbeck and then we put it on a separate page. Piece of paper for him.
To sign up for public comment though, like we've never had enough public. It's just Fred.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm not. I don't think we need to do that. To me, that feels like it's for a bigger school district, right?
I think we should always pull this policy back up and then, you know, adjust it again in the future if it became something that was needed, but right now I don't think it is. Tonight it might be because I think we're going to have a whole lot of not so happy people want to talk, but.
I actually think that that, I mean, it doesn't, this won't be active for tonight, but I, I think Fred in person is our only, you know, public. But there is something about being, you know, remote that allows more parents to come and more teachers that live out of the town to come.
Yep.
So.
So I think if we could keep our current policy, it's not that old because we did update it. But paragraph number three at the start with public comment is not a discussion, debate or dialogue. I think that's an important piece to add to our current policy.
Yeah.
So I would add that prior to paragraph three.
And, hi Jackie.
Hi Jackie.
Hi guys.
You all right?
I'm just kind of at the end of my rope.
It's time for break. I think we can keep our, at the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting. I don't think we have to do the signup part. We have the three-minute piece. Our number two is pretty similar. And then number three, do we want, rather than topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed on the agenda, do we want the new number three?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess number four doesn't hurt. It's probably good to have somewhere.
I think so. And do we want to add that after a warning reserves a right to terminate speech, which is not constitutionally protected? And I think that one's important, the constitutionally protected piece, because there were some cases that that went forward saying that the chair was breaching the freedom of speech. So I do think it's important to state that any speech which isn't constitutionally protected will be terminated.
You have, do you happen to know any additional information about the in, in number four, they added after a warning and that's not in our number four? Is that, you know, required because of the?
I think because of that, they were those court cases about freedom of speech.
Yeah, I think we added them.
Okay. So. All right, I'll add to our number four. Number five always does go through the chair. And then I, I would leave our six and seven, and I think we're fine as long as we add the paragraph about public comment. We replace number three and we add details to number four. I think we're okay. Do we want to move on to the next policy?
Yeah.
Oh, Jackie, I love your background. I just noticed. IHB E A is English learner education. I have one edit right off the bat. For our district, it says the district shall provide suitable research-based language instruction for blah, 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 in grades kindergarten through. And they have 12. I should be changed to six. But other than that, this is based on updates to the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And so we need this policy. Okay. And a lot of these IHB E A and then JB and JBB in the state's infinite wisdom, we're under a review of educational stability in Union 28, and we need to make sure we have these policies. And they are continuing the review even though it's a COVID year. So we need to make sure we have updated policies. So policy JB is equal education, equal educational opportunities. And I think Pam highlighted for me in the MASC version in yellow some updates to the policy that we didn't have in ours. So my recommendation would just be to update to the new one because that was updated in, even though ours is 18. This came out in February of 2019.
I do. This seems like definitely remnants of the wordy committee, whenever that was. But this is actually a case where I do actually really like the opening sentiments that they have around.
Yes. I'm sure that was a, a certain member that was very good with words. Put that in there.
Is that the opening paragraph?
Yes, she likes the opening sentence, basically.
We have the letter and spirit thing that I also like, but the, oh gosh, sorry, I've got too many screens open. In recognition of the diversified characteristics and needs of our students. And with the keen desire to be responsive to them, that sentence.
Okay. I think the new one has that also.
Oh, you're right.
Yep. It's pretty similar. But they added homeless status, I believe is the difference.
So why is ours longer? Yeah.
The third paragraph, no child shall be excluded from or discriminated against in any admission to a public school. And then it states all of those protected classes.
Right. Yeah, I'm fine with adopting the new one.
Okay. The next one after that is educational equity policy JBB. And I don't believe we had that policy.
Yeah.
But we do, we do need it. We need to have it. It's recommended by MASC and we also need it for the audit.
Oh, audits.
Oh, audits, yes. But let's audit for educational stability in the most unstable year of education in my entire career.
And that's long. Isn't it 31 years for you, Jen?
Uh, I think I'm, this is the 30, this will be 33 when I finish.
Yeah.
Yep. Thirty-three fine years. See, HCA approval of handbooks and procedures is our policy, but the new one is approval of handbooks and directives.
I don't like that they approve procedures because, sorry, but I, because I need to be able to just make procedures for things.
Right. But it also feels weird because the MASC policy says the law directs that in each school building containing the grades nine to 12 inclusive. So I, I have it in here, but I don't think it really pertains to us.
Yeah, I totally understand. Policy needs to be approved.
Right. I, I think ours is fine. As is, because we don't have grades nine to 12.
Yeah. Yeah, it gets a lot more complicated when high school regs are.
Right. And so, I mean, and some of the policies in high school books are based on a lot more laws and regulations.
Jen, which one was that one? I'm trying to.
The HCA. Ours is called approval of handbooks and procedures. And the new one is called approval of handbook and directives. I would say we could change the title of ours because school committees don't approve procedures. They approve policies.
Yes. They do usually approve the handbook too.
Right, but not, but we don't bring procedures forward. So we could change the title to handbooks and directives.
Sure.
Like the new policy. I do think the paragraph.
Handbook. It's about standards of conduct. I don't know.
I do think the second paragraph, the, it is essential that the contents of all handbooks conform to school committee policies. So we could add that second paragraph. Or we could just use the new MASC one and eliminate the first paragraph, which says grades nine to 12.
Is the, is the disciplinary policy sentence relevant? Yes, we hope that.
I just lost mine. Where are they?
Probably because if it's a policy, it should be reviewed.
So. Sorry, I'm losing it. I've got two screens. I've got the same, I'm looking, comparing the exact same thing instead. God, I wonder, I'm like, wait a minute, they look exactly the same thing.
I think if we take theirs and get rid of the first sentence, it's probably the okay.
Simples.
Yep.
Because ours is really old, it's from 07.
Yep. So we would start with the school council shall review
Yeah.
the school, the handbook each spring to consider changes. It is essential, committee approval will be necessary.
We usually do that in the fall, but it's, it's, it makes more sense to do it in the fall because over the summer I do a lot of updating. I don't do that in the spring when I'm dealing with MCAS and
Right.
everything else that wraps up a school year. So can we change that to fall?
So the first sentence would say this, and do you share it with the school council, Jackie?
Well, yeah, usually the school council looks at it. I mean, this year has been not that, but in, in regular times.
So we'll say the school council shall review the handbook each fall to consider changes in the disciplinary policy to take effect.
Yeah.
Can we just say each year?
Yeah, I would say.
Each year. Okay.
Yeah, I like.
I like that better.
That's super hopeful.
Yep. I like that better. Okay, so we'll do the new MASC with some edits.
And just a note that Grace said that Grace, the town clerk needs us to switch a little bit before so that we don't bump each other out of the Zoom rooms because Dan, oh, he's texting you.
Do, do we want to wrap up? We have two other policies, but we, I mean, they're not so important that we need to do them right now.
They're the two budget ones.
Yeah, one is fiscal management goals. And the other one is budget adoption procedures.
At least one more and see if we can.
So the budget adoption procedures is exactly the same. So we could keep ours and just put the date of review, which is today.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Perfect.
Okay. And do we want to hold off on fiscal management goals?
Do you think they're?
I think yes.
Hold off on it?
Yes, because Jen, I actually want to text you something.
Okay. All right, so I will move most of them for with edits and the DBG, which is budget adoption. I'll just put the renew review date. So the only one we're going to hold off till next month is. hold off till next month is policy DA. So it's 6:54. If I could have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right. We won't bump into the next meeting and we're done here. Thank you.
Bye.